Good evening and welcome to the Montemoy Regional School District, Montemoy Regional School Committee meeting Thursday, April 30th at 6:30 PM. This meeting is being fully remotely in, excuse me, held remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts, March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 30A Section 20. You can join the Zoom meeting by clicking on the meeting ID located on our website and the password is provided. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:44 PM. First item on the agenda would be to approve the minutes of the April 9th, 2020 and April 21st, 2020 meetings. Are there any questions or discussion regarding the minutes? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we accept the approve the minutes for April 9th, 2020 and April 21st, 2020.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, a roll call, Sharon?
I.
Nancy?
I.
Joe?
I.
Joanne?
Yes.
Tina?
I.
Mary?
I.
Terry?
I.
Jackie?
I.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda would be public comments. Is there anyone this evening who would like to speak? I think I said Charles. Hi, Charles, would you like to speak today?
I would, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Charles Gruska, 6 Tberry Ave, Harwich. And today I want to speak as a community member, a resident taxpayer and a grandparent of two students in the school system. And I want to speak to second some of the comments that the wonderful comments that were made at the end of the April 9th school committee meeting with regard to the efficacy of the distance learning effort in the Montemoy District. Comments by Mark Smith about the vision and leadership of our superintendent. The comments of the superintendent about the administrative staff and their efforts and attitude in pulling that effort together with him. The comments of the superintendent and Mr. Burkhead with regard to the attitude and efforts of the entire staff of the district and the educational staff of the district to want to move right ahead and keep education moving in the district. We during the first three weeks of the shutdown, our granddaughter was with us during the day until the time came when her two parents had a reduction in their hours. She was spending the day with us, so we had my wife who's a retired teacher and I had an opportunity to watch the launch of the distance learning effort and take in the weeks. And I have to share with, I want to share with you how impressed and pleased we were and what we witnessed in those dish, in those efforts. And we had communication with our oldest daughter. Our oldest daughter has been a high school English teacher for over 20 years. Last four years she's been teaching at the Greenfield Community Virtual School. It's one of two schools in the state K to 12 that do all of their efforts through distance learning. She didn't go to that school because she thought it's better than traditional learning. She was recruited to the school, she was on leave and her, for childcare. And her youngest daughter was ready to go back to school and so she took up the position, has been there for four years. She was so impressed to hear the efforts of the Montemoy system, especially in relation to what she was witnessing with her own children in their local school system, as well as what many of her friends who are teachers were sharing with her from the experiences in other districts. And many of her friends who have children in other districts were sharing. She was just absolutely amazed and distance learning is their business at the virtual school. We have a neighbor here in Harwich who has two children in the Harwich Elementary School. And she was raving to me about her pleasure and that she and her husband were having over the efforts going on for their children. And she had been in contact with family members in other communities here in Massachusetts, some very well to do. And you think high-powered communities where very little if nothing was going on, same experience as our oldest daughter back inland. During the two weeks of the, two weeks into the shutdown, I shared an article with Dr. Carpenter, which came from the community I moved to Harwich from, saying that the teachers were still in negotiations over how the distant, how things were going to work under the shutdown. In the meantime, Montemoy was up and running and actively moving ahead with its efforts. And that was way ahead of anyone else I've been able to hear of throughout the state and any other district outside of the two virtual schools. So I want to second the comments that were made at the last meeting, but I want to extend the kudos to two other groups, to the school committee and to the taxpayers of Harwich and Chatham. Because Montemoy was able to carry out its efforts, not just because of the visionary leadership, the attitude of the entire staff, but it also had a budget that provided the resources, the technology, the training, the use of the technology and the technical support backup to make that possible. And we could have a superintendent with the best vision and leadership in the world. We could have teachers with the best attitude in the world, but if they didn't have the resources to carry out distance learning, then there would be no effort like we've seen in these recent weeks. In fact, the community I came from did a survey last year and determined that 25% of the households in that community did not have the technology or infrastructure to be able to do an effort like this. Now this year they're really in a pickle, but this year they have a distant, they have a budget surplus they're anticipating. So they're in the process of buying hundreds, if not thousands of Chromebooks. And they plan to have those Chromebooks distributed by sometime next month, according to a newspaper article this week. And then when those Chromebooks are in and distributed, they still are talking about having to train their teachers in the use of the technology for instruction. So I think all of these comments make me more and more, as a taxpayer, as a community member, proud and pleased with what is going on here in Montemoy. And it also points out to me that this points to the importance of these resources in the budget. You're going into a very interesting and challenging perhaps budget time. And that's going to continue well into the future. I would urge the committee to, what we, one of the things we've learned from this is priorities for budgeting, not only class size and course offerings that we've always been a priority in the past, but the real importance of the resources to keep, make distance learning possible, if we're going to continue in that situation or if that situation is going to come up in the future. So just my thanks to the committee, my thanks to the taxpayers. As a taxpayer, I want you to know that during the shutdown, I have, I have felt and learned that my tax dollar is being well returned to me in the efforts of what we've been able to do, keeping education going right from the beginning. When other school systems were sitting still or teachers were parading, trying to greet their students and putting messages on the internet, how much they miss their students, education was moving forward in the Montemoy District. And I think you should get that message out to the community in your budget deliberations. And I think you need to keep the importance of this area in mind was when now we've learned, we may be in this situation again for a while or into the future. Could I make one other comment on a different topic and that's with regard to?
One, Charles, a quick one.
Class of 2020, I know there's a lot of concern and a lot of hurt and a lot of interest in what's happening or the disappointment over what's transpired this year and how it's going to affect all their end of the year events. And I know that's of relevance to some people on the committee and at the table. I just had a thought and I wanted to share with you and with the class of 2020. I've thought this week, there's one blessing that that class has had tremendous blessing and maybe they can carry it forward into the future. They are a class that for five years had Bill Burkhead as their principal. And to me, that's a marvelous, marvelous blessing. It's a blessing that my grandchildren aren't going to have and nobody in the class of 2020 across the country has had. And very few students in Chatham or Harwich have had in their experience. He's the most outstanding principal I have ever known and I've known so many in my lifetime. And just a thought to everyone, what a blessing the class had. They're going to someday soon forget about all the events that take place around graduation. They're going to carry with them into life what they got out of their Montemoy education. Thanks to the efforts of Bill, leading his wonderful staff. So thank you for letting me share those thoughts with, with you as a member of the community. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Charles, very much, as always. And now moving on to recognitions, Dr. Carpenter?
So let me begin my recognitions with this. I want to recognize and congratulate Bill Burkhead on his, on getting the nod for the superintendent. I think as a, as a superintendent, it makes me quite proud to, to see one of ours get that, you know, get that acknowledgement. And I think just as much as it makes me proud when we see three of our principals at Montemoy Regional High School, I mean, Montemoy Regional School District are assistant, used to be assistant principals within our district, you know? So it's, it's nice to see, you know, folks that are with our district move up into, you know, other, you know, higher roles and educational leadership. So congratulations, Bill. Next, I want to recognize and thank the following. Kathy Mello for her donation of $100 to help support our food service program, to the Cape and Islands Workforce Development Board for their annual donation in the amount of $2,000 to the school to careers program at our high school. Sharp fault thanks to David Oppenheim, Shane Coughlin, Jen Mensler of the Wayside Inn, who donated in total $3,973.27 of food. This is the third time they have donated to the, our food pantry since we closed schools. And along with the help from the Lower Cape Outreach, Montemoy Community Services and the Chatham Children's Fund, it has helped the pantry provide food and supplies for 364 people this month. This includes 201 children and represents double the number of Chatham Elementary Pantry families served per month prior to the shutdown. We couldn't have done this without the help, without their help and the pantry is open to all Montemoy families. You can just reach out to Principal Millen or our school counselor, Jill Malinowski, if families need support. Next, we'd like to thank Mr. and Mrs. John and Janine Scott of West Chatham. They created the ABC Challenge and provided three prizes. First prize, $50, second prize, $30, and third prize, $20. All in gift certificates to Where the Sidewalk Ends Bookstore downtown, to the first three families that found all 26 letters. The Massey family came in first, the Horgan family came in second, and third place was the Eldridge family. The Gully family also found all 26 letters and the Wright family found 19. The Scotts did not have any direct connection to our school, just thought our families might enjoy this challenge. So they reached out to see if we would be interested in this. This is a great example of a community thinking creatively of, you know, on how to take care of our children and families at this time. Finally, the district applied for and was just awarded a $10,000 grant from the Eos Foundation, a private philanthropic foundation committed to fighting hunger, poverty and promoting education and gender and racial equity in Massachusetts to help, to help support our efforts. So thank you to the Eos Foundation. That would be it.
Great. Thank you very much, Dr. Carpenter. Moving on to reports and discussions, first item on the agenda would be the Chatham Elementary School Improvement Plan update. Dr. Millen?
Hello there, I am going to just switch my screens. Share a screen with you all. Okay, so I have lost view of most of you, but I can see the chair and the stout. So if you can give me a thumbs up that you can see my screen, I would feel great about that. Thank you. Okay, so I am Robin Millen, the principal of Chatham Elementary School. And I'm here to present to you today the 2020 data presentation. Presentation is very similar to what the other principals have done, so I won't spend a lot of time explaining the slides. Dr. Carpenter shared all these slides with us, so it's consistent in its language. But if you have any questions along the way, just let me know. When we study data, when we dissect data at Chatham Elementary School, we always have a picture of the children first. All these numbers represent children, so there they are. And actually that's before we got our new playground, that's down at the Veterans Field Playground. These guys are the kindergartners and our first graders. So Chatham Elementary School has some interesting enrollment trends, as you know. So over the last five years or so, we've seen a decline in our enrollment. The decline in the enrollment is primarily, starting around 2017, 2018, is a reduction in the limiting of the school choice seats. We were very stable at two sections of each grade level at that time. And what we've been doing over the last couple of years is simply accepting school choice seats that were what we call legacy seats. So, and again, it was consistent, we were able to see about two sections, about 17 students in each section. However, this year we have had 17 students register for kindergarten. Only 11 of them are school, are Chatham residents. They were, I think, six school choice applicants. Four of those applicants were from Harwich. Five out of the six were legacy students, so they had siblings somewhere in our district. And there was one new family, that new family has not registered yet. And then we have one family on the waitlist as well. So if that family that did get accepted does not register by a certain date, we will accept that as their waitlist student. This obviously is concerning to us. I mean, we've, you know, typically been able to see a kindergarten section, those two kindergarten sections, this will put us to one section. You know, it's, if you look at it traditionally and don't, you know, place as a traditional kindergarten, that means the same cohort will be traveling through five years of school as it's only cohort options as far as placement and teachers and things like that. But that is what we have. So again, we have 17 students register for kindergarten next year. The slide over, I think it's on your right, it's on my right, is an interesting slide too. So even though we had a decline in population, we've had an increase in needs. So our high needs group, which is the unduplicated numbers of students with disabilities, our English learner students and our former English learner students and our economically disadvantaged students has obviously increased over the, over the last five years. So the study increase of high needs is from 38.6 to 50% of the population. Special education has remained similar over the years, except that the fact that the school choice percentage in those numbers has rate risen. It's about 25% in this category at this time. The rise in high needs percentage is mostly due to first English learner categories, which has more than doubled. So if you see that it's gone from 6.9% to 16.7%, where English is not the first language. And students that qualify for English learning instruction has gone from 4.7 to 9.8%. To put that in perspective, the percentage of the whole district is 4.6%. So there's 23 students at Chatham Elementary School as L's and then there's 32 students at HES. So again, if you think about that and it's, it's percentages, it's a little heading towards Chatham a little bit more. So I'm going to speak a little bit more about the L categories and the statistics with that category later in this program. But it's something to watch because another interesting statistic is that 30% of our current kindergarten is currently L. So economically disadvantaged also is one of our areas that we really see a rise in. According to this data, now this is a state data, we have risen from 25.6% in 2015 to 37.3%. But as you know, the state data has taken the three times out of the year. Once is at the beginning of the year, right when we're coming out of the summer. And the last time is in June, when we're heading into the summer. So when I pull the numbers throughout the year, and I know I've talked about this before, continually rises, right? So when I pulled the numbers on March 13th, when, right before we closed, the numbers were 51% of Chatham Elementary School were economically disadvantaged and then one of three of our kindergarten students were. So it's concerning and it's even more concerning us, you heard Dr. Carpenter say about our food pantry and the needs that we're currently seeing in the state right now. And why we're seeing a doubling of our increase in our needs for our kids in our food pantry. So after this whole thing is over, I'm hoping we all get back to work, but it is something we need to be watching. So accountability is what we're going to talk about next. I'm so sorry, I have a very active puppy. Um, the accountability that we have is these measures and these are the MCAS measures. The measures that, I'm not going to go over this again, I'm the fourth principal to speak to you today. So, so if you have questions about this, let me know. But hold on one second. My husband just came home. So the measures here are the 2018 accountability. We're going to give you a two-year reference. So the focus on the trends and patterns, so two years is a trend and three years is a pattern. And that's what we look for, we work off trends and patterns. And so the relative strength in 2018 was the English Language Arts. The relative weakness obviously was mathematics. The growth points that were awarded are very similar, you'll see, to 2019. And then our concern obviously at that time and continues to date is the absenteeism. And again, I'll speak about that in a little while. This is a 2019 accountability. Again, the relative strengths, which we ended up having a relative strength in mathematics. The relative weakness was English Language Arts. I'll speak about the focus shifts that we do and what's happening with that in relation to our data when I dissect this with you in a little bit. Our growth points again in 2018 were just about the same. And we have seen a significant improvement in absenteeism for all students. And again, absenteeism is some of the slides, so we'll be talking about it later. But there is still a growing concern about the absenteeism for our lowest performing students. So what the state does is they take two years of this data, you know, they weigh it differently. The 2018 data was weighed, I had 40% and then 60% for the 2019 data, which put us at a cumulative criterion reference target percentage of 54%, which puts us in the category of substantial progress towards our target. When, however, our accountability percentage was 33%. It really puts us at the cusp of that target and it's a little, it's very concerning. And it's something that again, we really looking at right now and we really started working on it. So we ended up closing school this year. We will write that down for you. So grade three MCAS results. So again, these, these scales are equal. As you go through these slides, you'll see some of the scales are not equal. So you can compare 2018 English Language Arts to 2019. This is grade three, this is obviously the first year that they take MCAS. We do take our MCAS completely online. So the slight increase in exceeding, you can see, and then there's a slight decrease in not meeting. So if we back this up to determine a trend and a pattern, easily a meeting and exceeding in 2017. So the two, the green and the blue together was 67%. In 2018, it was 63%, which becomes a trend. But then in 18, there was an 18% drop in, in 2019. The state average for the same time period was 47%, 52%. So those two years, we were way, we were above the state average. However, in 2019, when we fell those 11 percentage points below the state average. So we didn't quite make a pattern out of that. With our data analysis, we realized that there was a recurrent pattern through our data. For example, in 2019, we had seven students that fell within five points of reaching the 500 mark, which becomes the meeting mark. We call them fence line students and we have them on both sides. So fence line students, five points over, five points under that 500 mark. And due to our population, every fence line child or every child actually is equal to almost 2.5 percentage points, which can benefit us sometimes if they're over the fence and it can be negatively impacting if they're under the fence. So this year our fence line students impartially meeting equaled about 17% in that category. So if we had students move over that fence and we added that 17 to the meeting, then our numbers would have been equitable. So again, most 17% of those kids just missed meeting by five points. This slide here is grade three math MCAS. And again, be careful because you can see the scale changes here. It's not, don't compare the sizes of the greens, blues, oranges and reds. However, the three-year trend shows that when we focus our, like a shift in our instructional focus, focus change from reading to writing or reading to math, our percentage is very wildly and it's a concern. I mean, our staff is very good at reading their data and we cut, we talk about it like being spinning plates. Like it seems like we can spin a plate and then we focus over here and that spinning plate starts to wobble. And then we go over here and you'll see that recurring all through this data. So the first one is a significant increase in meeting expectations. You'll see that even with the change in the scales. And then we remain the same with exceeding and not meeting. So on each side, we remain consistent with that. So over the three-year trend, it shows how our focus shifts slightly causes problems. So in an analysis, we noticed that we had, in 2017 CES mathematics was exceeding or meeting by 51% in this data. And we have five students at the fence line, two above and three below. So this is actually more solid data than the ELA. It really worries us when our kids are that close to, you know, shifting in either category. We want them solidly in that meeting and more solidly in the exceeding. So that's where we wanted to head towards. In our analysis, we also realized that we have a concern about that focus change. So the teams tend to focus goals on one subject or the other. So in 2018, our focus was really in ELA. And then in 2019, we realized the data in ELA was pretty strong, so, and our data in math was pretty low. So we wanted to switch that focus, we switched the focus and you can see that we got a return on investment. What we want to do is spin all the plates all at the same time. So this is a three-year trend pattern analysis. And again, it reflects what I just spoke to you about. Outside the previous observations, we are also starting to see and measure the impact of the changing demographics. However, one of our norms is no shame, no blame and no excuses. So, you know, we're acting on those changing, but we're not allowing it to be an excuse. Our school-wide improvement plan is specifically targeting special aspects of that demographic change. So it doesn't become an excuse to us. So we are providing our teachers with professional development and instructional methods like the deep learning that you've talked, we've talked with you about prior to tonight, to offset the impacts and to make sure we're providing the equity and access within our classrooms. We're strengthening the efficacy of our response to intervention, especially in the primary levels to stop, start with those gaps happening. We're focusing on providing wraparound services with community partners like the Lower Cape Food Pantry and the Gosnell Counseling, working with families on expectations and homeschool and school home communication. And then we're also, and I'll talk about this in a little while too, but we're realizing there's a real gap between grade two expectations and grade three expectations. It's, the gap is too much for grade three to overcome to get to a stage where we meet them at that time when they take the MCAS especially. Please stop me if you need any, have any questions along the way. Just keep moving here, I cannot see you. Okay, so we are measuring and tracking our progress with certain numbers and certain data. So in these data, you'll see that our males, females are still have an achievement gap, especially in ELA. And then you will also see, what you, actually what you don't see here is in the grade three MCAS scaled scores, they were more equitable than they have been in the past two years. So the scaled score in math for males was 499 and the female scaled score was 497. However, the grade three MCAS ELA, the male scale scored was 498 and the female scale score was 505. So the scale scores were closing the gap, but overall in percentages of mastery were not. However, if you look down farther in some of this data, we don't have enough numbers to be big enough here. So I'll just tell you, our gap still exists in our economically disadvantaged and our non-economically disadvantaged, which is one of our cyclicals as well. Economically disadvantaged was 39%, 38%, I guess it is here. And then our non-economically disadvantaged was 48% for ELA, so a significant gap. And then our economically disadvantaged scores for math was 54% and our non-economically disadvantaged was 45%. So again, we're closing, but, and our shifts are, our focus are paying off in that way. So in the slides, there's comparison data for the Cape schools. So unfortunately, we are the lowest overall in ELA and mathematics at grade three. However, it's, it's a little bit of a misnomer because the only two schools on this, and we're, and again, we're still lower than them. But the only two schools that really reflect our same demographics are Orleans and in Centerville. So I highlighted them. We tend to compare schools when they have the same grade levels present, the same, about the same size, same economic disadvantage, the same needs disadvantage or advantages, whatever it may be. So we, so I highlighted those two just so that you could see them. We have other districts on the Cape that are similar to us that were in this slide, but I don't want to mess up Dr. Carpenter's slides. One of them is Orleans, which is there. Center, Centerville isn't. Center, Centerville is there. And then we have East Falmouth, which was at 55% for ELA and 35% for math. And then I always work off of Nantucket. It just seems like it's very similar in the way it's, its L population exploded and the way that their economically disadvantaged percentages grew so quickly, similar to what Chatham is. So I always keep Nantucket kind of in my mind as well. And then Tucket was 49% in ELA, so just over us and 42% in math. So just come here. Grade four. All right. So grade four, this scale is the same. Okay. So you can see there's a decrease in meeting and an increase in partially meeting. And you can see, I wrote here that six out of the 58 were in, on the fence line, resulting in just, just over 10% in partially. So our three-year trend in grade four ELA was exceeding in meetings. So in 2017, it was 53% and 68% in 2018 and 48% in 2019. But again, if those 10% had gone over into the meeting and got, we would have been closer to remaining pretty consistent with those percentages. However, it occurred to us too, when we dissected the data, that our shift in focus went towards mathematics again. And again, we are trying to spin these plates and we're having difficulty doing that. So here's the 2016 math data. Again, it's different scales here, so be very careful. I taught math in the middle school forever and I would never allow my students to give different scales. But here they are, so just be careful when you look at them. So the last three years in 2017, 39% of our students, and again, that's not up here, but 39% of our students were meeting or exceeding 36%. The next year, and 41% last year. Here, the fence line has to be acknowledged too, because we have an equal amount just over and under that 500 mark. So a 10% shift in either way really would have thrown us off. I worked directly with the grade four mathematic students last year. Oh, I guess, sorry, I got distracted by whoever's on the phone. What's my most concerning here? Not just the data, but the, is that we have 0% in exceeding. You know, I worked with fourth grade mathematics last year. I did their, I did their enrichment and then interventions section all last year. And we have many, many children that should have been in that exceeding. So when we got this data in September, in late August and September, and I worked with the staff, what we did was, we tried to figure out why. So the staff did an item analysis on the questions, the MCAS questions. And we realized that there's a very significant difference in the vocabulary of math and focus and with MCAS. So one of the goals this year was to kind of make a synonym list of that math vocabulary. So students would know that one word meant the same thing if it was said a different way so that they could actually apply and understand what the MCAS was asking in relationship to what they know from math and focus program. So we also realized that we had to provide PD on the instructional shifts, specifically, again, from grades two to three. The, what we found in math is that the understanding of teachers, the efficacy of teachers, knowing the progressions and the progression standards to get to mastery, like, you know, to get the multiplication, you need to know repeated addition. And or not to repeat addition, you need to know addition of, you know, facts. So it's, and have strategies to solve those things. So we realized that we're very strong as an instructional group on understanding the progressions of reading. But math is something that we needed to be working on. And we have been working on that all year. And so that's a focus of ours. Again, here you have the three years that I just discussed. And again, you can see that in some places, those fence line students plays a significant impact and others, they didn't. So our SIP again is progress monitored with, between the males and the females and the economically disadvantaged and the non-economically disadvantaged. The percentage of exceeding and meetings still demonstrate a gap here. However, the growth percentiles are evening out for ELA. Males outperform females this year. Get females' growth percentage far exceeded the males. In fourth grade, you get a growth percentage, which I like a lot better too, because you can see, are we closing those gaps? And again, you want growth percentages higher than 50. So, and that's where you can see that you're exceeding. And then economically disadvantaged at 36% in ELA compared to 44% and non-economically disadvantaged. And economically disadvantaged was 36% in math compared to 56% in non-economically disadvantaged. So we're still seeing a gap there. And here's our comparison districts. And in the last, in grade three, we had two comparison districts. And this one, this changed, so we only had Orleans here to compare with. However, the other schools that we compare with on the Cape was Centerville, which I listed that at the bottom of your slide, 63% in 58. And then East Falmouth, 58, and ELA was 47%. And again, my kind of place that I look is Nantucket. Nantucket was at 35% for ELA and 24% for math. So we work, you know, we go to work when we find this data and we try to figure out what to do and we need to progress on that along the way. So our MAP, and I know we've talked about this a lot, our MAP scores not only allow us to know what instruction we need to give to children on almost an immediate time period, but we also progress monitor our growth and our achievement throughout the year. So we know we're on track. We don't want to keep doing the same things over and over again, even in a year, if it's not working. So we track using MAP. And I know you've seen this lovely graph before, but we really want everybody to be in that top right quadrant, in that green area. In fact, at Chatham, we never look at it as equal quadrants. We move that achievement percentile over to 75%. And we move that growth percentile up to 60%, but becomes a very small quadrant up there. But we want everybody in that very small quadrant. And again, that's in our school-wide improvement plan. So you can see here just visually, we were, we were progressing this year, making some growth here. And then, I can't see, hold on, maybe I can move you guys. Yep, I can move you. So I just couldn't see my numbers. So on this one, again, this is the growth percentile. That bottom number where the arrow is pointed to is the most important to us. You want those numbers definitely between 40 and 60, but you definitely want them at the high 60. Anything over 60 is making more than a year's worth of growth and a year's worth of time. So we're moving that. And again, these results now reflect everybody in the school. They're not just third graders and fourth graders. This is K1, 2, 3 and 4. However, this is where you see what I'm talking about between grades two and three. So that, or our orange or yellow target for the growth, you want that inside that blue rectangle, I guess it is. You want to make sure that you are meeting or exceeding the growth targets for every grade level. And you can see, second grade, we seem to have a dip and we have to figure that out either curricular wise, instructional wise, or what are we doing to service those children as far as response to intervention? The other really important aspect of this is this last column over here to the far, far right. And again, they go from 55, 74, 33, 76, 62, and those are the grade levels. And you want those solidly in 40 to 60. And even better to close gaps over 60. So again, we have that concern at 33 in grade two. Here's the math results. And again, these were December results. And unfortunately, these are the numbers that we're going to have. We're not going to have math MCAS this year. We're not going to have an end of the year math assessment. So we're going to have to be working off this and whatever we have in the fall for math to really get going again when we start. Hopefully, we start in the fall. And again, you want to see that growth percentile higher than 40, anywhere between 40 and 60. And again, I prefer it to be way over 60 because we do have to overcome some of those, you know, advantages and disadvantages of our demographic. And again, this is where you really see the concern in grade two. And then we're just under in grade four. And then the percentage at 21% in grade two. And then 44% in grade four puts us at about a year's worth of growth, but on the lower, lower end. Okay. So attendance. Why is it important? Because every minute matters, right, Chair? There she goes. All right. So for attendance, and I know this is the least favorite part of my job. People really do not like the fact that we are paying attention to, sorry about that, attendance issues. But attendance issues, when it begins early, it affects later. So if, there's one in kindergarten nationwide that are, and first graders that are chronically absent. And poor attendance can influence whether children read proficiently. And there's some very, very, very strong research, research out there on that. And we know also that when children don't read by third grade, they have a very difficult time. And there's a high dropout rate. And there's also a high pipeline towards incarceration as well. So when students improve their attendance rate, they improve their academic prospects. It's proven. And in fact, it all, even in the elementary school, I talked with a lot of families. They're like, oh, they're in kindergarten, you know, no big deal. There's a direct correlation between them graduating beyond that when they are, start that pattern as early as our ages as well. So that all comes from a clearinghouse called Attendance Works. You can get any of their data and any of their research online if you so choose. So here is our attendance. And this is the 2019 data. So in 2018, 2019, we scored zero out of four points on the MCAS accountability around, yeah, state accountability measures. However, in 2019, we scored three out of four points. However, for our lowest performing subgroup, we still scored at a 0.4. And again, as our lowest performing continues to rise as far as some of our needs, it's something to worry about. So at Chatham, what we did was we took Mr. Burkhead's RTI process that he had instituted up at the high school. And we adapted it down at the elementary school. And we actually held response to intervention meetings. We do those for reading, writing, math, social, emotional, behavioral problems. But we did this for absences this year. And they were very, very effective. They were problem solution focused. And we always, for a lot of our meetings, we actually have stakeholders at the table all the time. But definitely for these meetings, we have the caregivers at the table. When you're talking about a seven-year-old or an eight-year-old, it's not typically a school refusal problem. It's usually typically something that's going on in the family that has to be worked out with us. And the response to intervention always targets that. So, and that again, comes from the research. When you involve the parents in a positive way and you get schools organized in that way, you actually have a turnaround as far as attendance. The other thing that a lot of our response plans involve some sort of connection, some sort of mentors. So we have a three-for-three program, which is our silent mentors. We have a visible mentor program. So in a lot of our response to interventions, we're motivating through that mentorship and those relationships, and it seems to be working. The other thing that we realized, and it comes again, from the Attendance Works, is that most schools don't look at the right data. They track data in different ways. So we've been looking at all sorts of different ways, like, you know, we look at just like, what days are the better during the week? What days, what are we doing in school? What are the units looking like, those type of things? So we are looking at data in many different ways. So the 2019 data comparisons, again, here's Chatham. Orleans is on the screen. This is where we actually rank towards the top. In other comparison districts that aren't on your screen, Centerville received three out of four for their students and four out of four. They are a high-performing district. So they are actually a school of distinction and that's where we want to be. So East Falmouth receives three out of four and zero to four, similar to ours. And their ranking was exactly the same as ours. They are substantially progressing towards their targets. Nantucket receives three out of four and three out of four for their lowest performing. And they are one category above us at meeting and exceeding because every minute matters. And lastly, our English language learners and their progress. And again, it's important to watch this because we are seeing such a rise in English language learner students and the need to educate them. So I'm going to move you guys out of my way one more time here. Hold on. You're trying to not see my data and not move you guys. So in the left-hand side is a number of Monmouth students that are L. And again, it's a small number per se, but it's a large percentage of our total population. In elementary schools, it's very difficult, especially when you're a pre-K4 system, to get anybody over the number six years in Massachusetts, simply because we are in school. If they started as a pre-K three-year-old, that would be the only way. But typically, Ls don't qualify for being typical, like peers. And unless they're identified, we wouldn't have them at that, at that age. So the percentage of students that are in the beginning stages, the intermediate stages and advanced are there. And you can see them. I'm not going to necessarily read them to you, but they are there. But this is what's important. So over the last five years, our L population has been between 16 and 19. So it stayed pretty consistent, except in the last year, it was 14 students. And it wasn't because we necessarily had a decline in students whose language, first language wasn't English. It's because we have, we have a very good rate of what we call flipping students, which means that we get them to the place where they become formally English learner students. So this year, though, our population is back to the 20 students. And that's a lot because that 30% of the kindergarten is classified as L. So 3.9 are higher on the literacy assessment. And so Ls are, have to take two assessments. They have to take the MCAS assessment, but they also have to take an access assessment for the state. And on that access assessment, a 3.9 or higher on the literacy assessment. And they also have to get a 4.2 or higher for the overall composite. That's where they qualify for meeting that state's exit criteria so that they can be flipped out and they prove that they've gained that mastery. So in 2015, or actually since 2015, we've had two or more students reclassified every single year and become formally L. So it's a very effective progress for us. And then last year, all L students scored an average of 3.0 on the overall proficiency on access. And that's really quite good because remember, you have to get to a 4.0 and we're moving that way. And then the state's criteria, oh, the state sets a criteria similarly like they do to the accountability things, is similar to that metric. And in 2019, 12 out of our 14 students met that proficiency target. And six of them were reclassified to be formally L. So a lot of good things there. And there you go.
Coming. Great, thank you. Fantastic presentation, Robin. I would open for questions or discussion at this time. And I'm going to go back out to my Brady Bunch screen so I can see everybody. That's not working, so that's neat. Anybody have any questions? Discussion for Dr. Millen? Tina?
Yes. Dr. Millen, thank you, as always, very thorough. I had a couple of questions with E, the English language. Just from my own understanding, it looked like they're in two categories. So they're in the ELL and the high needs. Is there a reason they put them in two categories like that?
So your high needs category is a non-duplicated category. So if you're L and special education, you only are classified once in that category. But it includes, the high needs includes EL, economically disadvantaged and special education. So they're not counted twice, but they are in two different categories of progression monitoring, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. The second thing, how many different languages are spoken at the school?
So right now, and that's, it's one of those things and one of the reasons why too, it's very different than Harwich Elementary. We have 11 different languages spoken at Chatham Elementary School. And again, it's, it's the, in our school, we don't have large communities of families that have other nationalities the same. Like, so we'll have like one family that's Vietnamese and one family that's Korean and one family. So there's not a large community presence of any one country. You know, it's just, it's very hard on some of the families because they don't have people, you know, to, to be, you know, with. You know, the churches and the, you know, some of the social aspects of being in a community, there's not a lot of like, you know, countries represented. So what we do do is we make sure we, we assign mentors to the families too. So like, if you're a second grade in your English learner family, you've just, primarily for our new arrivals, we assign a mentor family with you and an adult that's in the second grade with you, like a mom or a dad that can help you kind of navigate our own communities because there isn't a lot of community within the community.
Okay. All right. That, thank you for that. And I really appreciated for myself. And I really appreciated for myself anyway, that you compared this to Nantucket. Cause I am somewhat familiar with the dynamics over at Nantucket. And one of the things I learned recently at a, at a mask legislative event, and that's the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, is that Nantucket Elementary, for the first time ever, if I'm understanding correctly, in this whole region, they have a, their kindergarten class is the first, that's my majority minority. So I really appreciated you making that distinction for Chatham because it helps me understand a little bit more about the dynamics. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
So the only reason we don't come up in accountability measures to be like Nantucket is because they're a pre K two school and we're a pre K four school. So, but otherwise we wouldn't, and they're larger.
But thank you for that because it just helped me understand a little bit more about the dynamics. So thank you.
I have a quick question.
Well.
From a secondary ed teacher who had her 55 minutes a day to do what she needed to do. Always curious with the younger children. I know you differentiate, obviously you teach to their need, but do they get equal time ELA, equal time math? When all is said and done, on average?
So I'm trying to get you guys off the slide share. Hold on one second. So no, they don't get equal typically. So in our, oops, now I shut myself off, in the, I want to stop your share for you guys. So you know, I'm looking at yourselves twice here. There you go. There you are. Okay. So they don't get it. So typically we have 120 minutes of ELA per day. And that's 90 minutes of some sort of instruction differentiated tier one instruction with a 30 minute response to intervention, intervention or enrichment. Built into that. So 30 minutes is what we call no excuse time, where we push as much of our intervention and enrichment sport into those grade levels and start supporting students in all, in that breadth and depth of way. For mathematics, and again, it's a little less at grades three and four. There's not 120 minutes at grade three and four. I see Cindy online. I believe it's about 90 minutes, 87 minutes in three and four. So again, you have to think about it that way. The, for mathematics, we tried to do, it's 60 minutes plus a 30 minute response intervention time and intervention and enrichment time. And again, it's slightly less at the three and four level, but not much less than that.
Thank you.
Great. Do we have any other questions or discussion right now for Dr. Millen?
I have, yes. So I would like to say that I really appreciate what you had to say, Dr. Millen, about how you looked at what the high school was doing for response to intervention for the absenteeism. And had the parents there at the table and the progress on that was phenomenal. So I, that was great. Thanks.
We, you know, it doesn't make families sometimes feel so good when they have to come in and sit down at a table with us. Again, that's the tier three level. We do proactive strategies prior to that, a tier two at the grade level. You know, we, we work on different motivation plans and different things and try to work out what's going on. Is it the morning? Is it getting somebody on a bus? Is it, you know, whatever we need to do. But at tier three, you're talking about chronically absent students where they're, they're exceeding 10% of the school year. And again, that's the trend and that doesn't look good as far as proficiency and mastery and reading specifically. So, but you know, so sometimes they walk in that meeting and they're like, not happy. But by the time they leave, they realize that we're doing this for the good of the children and the good of their academic growth. So, and you know, it's proactive. We come up with some very clever solutions sometimes and there's sometimes so simple, but they work. And then we progress monitoring.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Sharon. All right. Thank you, Dr. Millen, very much.
You're welcome. Have a great night.
Thanks you too. All right. Next up on the agenda would be the Montemoy Regional High School Program of Studies. Mr. Burkhead.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Okay. I first want to thank Mr. Gruska for his kind words and Dr. Carpenter. Looking around the grid, I can see pretty much everyone in the meeting. And I would say that those two individuals, along with all of you, have had a significant impact in my professional growth and my personal life, being part of the Montemoy family for six years. And I've loved every minute of it. So I want to thank you all. It's, it's an honor and truly humbling to be part of something so special, building, taking part in building such a great district and look forward to following it, even rise higher. Also, I will look, go back on the tape, Mr. Gruska and take a clip from what you said about the kids being fortunate enough to have me for five years as their principal and play it for my 23 year old and 21 year old who I'm homeschooling right now. They're both home and they're both unsatisfactory in laundry and doing dishes. They might need to hear that. So thank you all. And tonight's presentation, I know Ms. Police is here. I want to give her a shout out. The program of studies is a reflection of our values. It aligns with the strategic plan of the district and our school improvement plan. And it's really what we believe in and I'll share with you how that looks tonight. But Ms. Police has been the architect of this, along with our instructional leaders, has done the lion's share of the work in developing, bringing this to fruition. And we're really proud of it because it is a value system. And I'll share some examples of what that looks like tonight. I'm going to make an effort to share my screen now. It's not a long presentation, so certainly if you have questions while I'm doing it, shout them out. If not, I will be happy to take questions at the conclusion and Ms. Police will fill in any voids that I may have missed during the presentation. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. I can't see anybody. So first of all, the goals and priorities in some of this language you'll see in our strategic plan for the district. You know, the first one especially has been a focus this year in moving forward equity and access. So our, our courses we offer and the programs we run, we really want to focus on making sure that everybody has a seat at the table, that there's equitable access to all of our courses. And we're really focusing on that and we'll show examples in this presentation tonight on how we do that. The next one is flexibility. I think with the high school schedule being so complex, we really are working hard with this program of studies and the change we've made to make sure that there's flexibility in the student's schedule. So that the students are able to have more ownership in their schedule. And it's more useful and for them. That's the flexibility we're talking about there. The next one is the program of study should be reflective of the student culture, interest and voice. There's three parts that obviously the, the culture is, you know, students, the, the education the students are receiving in the curriculum should reflect the students in the seats in our buildings. So we'll, we'll give examples of that as I talk through this. And we've done a nice job and starting to pivot that way. Interest and voice. We really pride ourselves at the high school on allowing our students' voice in their academics. And this is a good example, the program of studies. We've made some changes based on the students' interests and what they are, have told us through surveys. And the last one is, you know, basically ensuring college and career readiness is raising the bar in our rigor and making our academics stronger for all kids. And it circles back up and you can repeat back to equity and access. So that's kind of the overview that we'll play out through these slides. And so some specific examples of the updates or revisions. The Honors World History is a current course that we already run for grade nine students. And you'll see in the first sentence here, without reading all of it, the goal of this course is to basically develop pathway for our AP European History course, which hasn't been running, but is popular. We want to make sure those students in ninth grade have the skills and content background in a, you know, a highly rigorous course to be prepared to take AP and to be able to. And again, another theme that you'll see tonight is that we want AP opportunities to be available for students earlier in their academic careers, especially if they're ready. So in this example, we're preparing kids for grade 10 to take AP courses, specifically European history in this example. The next example, AP Statistics, obviously a course we run now, has been traditionally only offered for 11th and 12th graders. And what we found is that lacked flexibility in which upperclassmen were taking multiple math courses or were taking courses that prohibited them from taking an AP Statistics course. So we are opening this up to 10th graders now. We've found that there are 10th graders in our building that are ready for this and that can handle AP Statistics. And those students that are ready to do that will have the ability to do so, which will allow them more flexibility and freedoms in choice in their schedules as they progress through the, their career at Montemoy. In our English example, this is pretty exciting. We currently have full year English courses and we're transitioning to full year, continue the AP Literature full year course for those students interested and prepared to do so. That will continue. The shift here is from changing the senior year British or World Lit for a full year and having students have a choice between one of those. So there's the student choice that's unique in this year's program of studies. And then second part of this combines choice and student voice. These four electives courses, the students will have a choice to pick to complement their British or World Lit choice for the second semester. And those, those courses there are based on the junior class survey we sent out. So we asked them what classes they would be interested in taking their senior year. So this is really exciting for the students and for the teachers. Now the students are getting their British or World Lit, again, choice. Our AP students are having their opportunities and students are able to take, have a voice and a choice in what they choose for their senior electives. So I think that's really good and we're looking forward to that. And again, more exciting news here in our visual arts. What we were finding is that we were inflexible in our scheduling. We were mandating that our students take two prerequisites that we determined. And what we were finding is when the students got to junior and senior year, there were less kids in our classrooms for the digital and performing arts because those, excuse me, those prerequisites were inflexible. And we also found in our research and listening to students that visual arts is very different than digital art. And students have typically have a passion for one or the other. Some have a passion for both, but typically, you know, Steve Cass's class and in working with the technology and conducting a show for the, for the school is very different from maybe someone that wants to do it in our portfolio. What we've done, the asterisks down there refer you to the program of studies. There's a nice visual there, a grid that allows the students to very, and the parents to very easily articulate their path that they want to choose. And this goes back to flexibility and student choice. Now we're allowing our students only one, they only have to take one prerequisite. And they can take that path. They can cross over between both. But again, it's all choice and we will, I think we'll, what we'll find with that is that when students have choice, the classrooms were more apt to fill up. So we're looking to see more kids taking our arts classes as they progress through their senior, junior and senior year. And the last slide here is from our science and technology courses. And the first two are more just changing in normoculture, just the, we got real creative a year or two back in, in creating some of our program of studies. So the imagination to build and the imagination to creation are real cool names. But colleges were kind of struggling with what they were when they looked at our student transcripts. So basically what they were is Engineering One and Engineering Two. So we just simply renamed them Engineering One and Engineering Two for those reasons. Same courses, same curriculum. The next three are, you know, an exciting opportunities for our kids. Again, forensics typically was only open to juniors and seniors. It's an extremely popular class. Students told us loud and clear that they wanted to take it in their 10th grade year. And so again, we listened loud and clear and we're able to do that this year in this program of studies to provide more opportunities for all kids to take it earlier or later, which allows more flexibility in their individual scheduling. Same with marine science, only offered before to 11th and 12th graders. Again, with prerequisites, bogging down the student's schedule. We've opened it up now so kids can take this elective in grade 10 and then have three years to do that if they so choose. And then astronomy, again, a very popular class. We open this wide open to students from grades nine through 12. So you see a pattern here developing. We're allowing more kids to take AP courses, more equity. They're also able to take it in their earlier grades. And the elective courses we're offering are also allowed to be taken earlier in the student's academic career to allow for more flexibility and to allow them in their upper grade levels to choose something they're passionate about. So I think those are the common thread that we've kind of identified here. And we look forward to implementing it in our coursework. And that's all I have for that. If I'll open it up to questions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Burkhead. Any questions or comments? Ms. Scott.
Hi, Bill. Just a quick question in terms of the, you're talking about how the courses are more popular. And so you're opening them up to more grades. Are you then anticipating having more sections of them for the students? Or are you still going to limit the sections that are what's currently there?
Yeah, that's a great question. Our, our schedule is driven by student choice. So when we, when the students pick their courses, we run a tabulation of how many students sign up for each course. And then we fill those sections accordingly. So if more kids are taking a certain elective, we'll run more sections of that and less of one that that's not so full, if you will. So the classes that are more populated will run and the ones that aren't typically don't. But what we've tried to do here is listen to the students' voices, knowing what they're interested in. Over the past five or six years, we've kind of weaned off classes that aren't populating at all and kind of taken them out of the program of studies and trying to keep classes that are more popular and more interesting to students.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, Tina.
Hi, Bill.
Hi, Tina.
Um, so I have a question. Let's see. Theater arts, if I read correctly, was there more theater at one time? And it was maybe minimized? I was just going over the, the full program of studies. So theater arts is available eight through 12. Is that right?
Right.
Okay. And there was never any more theater? Was that just the one class that we've always had?
Yes.
Okay. For some reason, and I, and I just was going to ask because I haven't followed it as closely, but I had heard from some of our theater families and kids that I, they thought that we had more offerings in the theater, in the performing arts than we do. So I just wanted to get clear, kind of get clarity on whether or not at any point in time, we had more than we do.
There hasn't been any reductions in the theater arts program at all.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I'm just scanning to see if there's any other questions for Mr. Burkhead. Oh, Joe.
Hi, Bill. Thank you for the presentation. I, I'm going to try to quote you accurately. The program of studies is a reflection of our values. I, I think you said early on, I would add, if you don't mind, that the program of studies in the age of school choice is also an advertising brochure for Chatham, Harwich and the towns beyond. And I think it's awfully successful as such. Part of the reason is there's a underlying philosophy here, which is not top down instruction of the type that was featured in my younger days. But there's a real effort to find out where students are, help them up the next rung of the ladder. In fact, provide several ladders and pathways for success. But to keep on mind all the time, what do students need? And how do we bring them along? How do we help them along in the next step? I think any parent in, in the, in the towns we represent and in neighboring communities would find this attractive and would look to the district as an increasingly desirable place to house their children. Doing dishes and such, that's a little harder. That's a little harder, but well, we'll stop there. So I'm, I'm just very, very happy with this program of studies and good, you know, salute to everybody on the staff that contributed to it. And to also, I, I just can't say police, Ms. Paliye, who did all that you said she did. So this is wonderful. Thank you.
And thank you. I also, you know, I concur that, you know, with Ms. Police working with our instructional leaders, this is some of the best philosophical changes and concrete changes we've made in a long time. And the most inclusive of student voice. I also want to thank Mark Smith because he had a large role in, in this, working with Jen and rolling out the student voice and choice. So we're in very good hands with both of those, those two in our instructional leaders, I think, are, take full credit for this. Those two in our instructional leaders, I think, are take full credit for this.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhead. Oh, Terry. Terry, unmute yourself, Terry. You got it? Terry, there you go.
Hi, Mary. Bill.
Hi.
No questions, Bill. I just want to commend you and wish you the best of luck. You brought a refreshing air to the brand new open door high school and the kids and parents clearly have benefited and appreciated and I wish you the the best up the road. So great to have experienced your professionalism.
Likewise. Thank you, Sarah.
You know, Mr. Burkhead, I like that student voice, student choice. It seems like it should be like on a T-shirt.
There you go.
Well, there you go. You can take it.
Leave me the residuals.
All right, great. No other questions or comments? Fantastic. Your last official high school program of studies presentation. Crazy.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to the superintendent evaluation, I believe Dr. Carpenter is going to lead that.
So, Bill, the one thing you can look forward to next year is you get to be evaluated in public. So, so anyway, the, we do need to bring the superintendent evaluation group back together. I think COVID-19 derailed us, so we need to kind of come up with a date, hopefully before our next school committee meeting that we can virtually meet as a subcommittee group. I think we, I can just talk about the overview. I think we, or I made headway on the, the goals that we set out with some tweaks that COVID-19 threw at us. We did hold one of the, or the last conversations with the superintendent that was part of the goal. I'll talk about that more during my superintendent's report, but we held that last night. The, the learning blocks that I enjoy getting in a classroom has been a little bit derailed in terms of the ability to get into classrooms. We, there's, I think, the data presentations that you've seen from each of the principals this year sort of come out of one of the goals on, on the data conversations with each principal. And, and then I think, you know, we have been moving the strategic plans forward. But I also think that some of this COVID-19 has derailed. Our, our conversations have gotten sidetracked as we've gone into this, this virtual world. And then the last one dealt with the the, the expanding early childhood options. And while we launched that off of the ground, COVID-19 also created a situation where we're closing the, the early childhood situation at Harwich Elementary School and Chadwick Elementary School, but then reopening Harwich Elementary School for, you know, essential personnel so that we can still have people with, with infant toddler needs at, at Harwich Elementary Schools be served so we can support the overall community during this. So, you know, so there's, there's been a headway. And, and there's also been some, some interesting twists in the road as COVID-19 has thrown a lot at us here in the last few months.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Carpenter.
Go schedule the time with the group.
You want us to schedule that now or you're, did you just, I missed what you said?
I'll have Leah send out an email and schedule the subcommittee.
Perfect. Great. Thank you. All right. Moving on, I think we're back to Dr. Carpenter for the FY21 Regional School District interim or 1/12 budget process.
I'll also have Katie jump in. I think the, this, this could potentially be be moot for our district if, capital IF, if both, both of our towns at the moment, both Harwich and Chatham intend to hold town meetings on June 22. If both town meetings happen and if budgets are passed at those June 22 meetings, then we don't need to have a 1/12 budget. I, I'm a little concerned that because those two meetings are so close to July 1, it probably behooves us to at least go the, through the process of developing a 1/12 budget that would be submitted to the commissioner if the, you know, if for whatever reason, one town meeting doesn't or the other doesn't happen, or for whatever reason, budgets aren't passed in either town. So the, the commissioner has put something out requesting that by June 1, each district, if they, if, if there's a chance that the member municipalities won't have past budgets by June 30 to at least submit a 1/12 budget proposal to, to the commissioner's office that would, you know, that would look at, you know, it would be basically a 1/12 budget going off of our current FY20 year. But we would also have to indicate how we would use, you know, certain types of reserves, you know, how would we be using excess and deficiency in this, you know, moving forward into a 1/12 budget. We have to keep in mind that, that a 1/12 budget is a reduction of the budget that we have currently put forward to the towns. You know, so we, you know, so we talked at our last meeting of having a budget that has a overall assessment increase to
$40 million budget.
That has a, that has an assessment increase to the town of Harwich at, at 2%. So it would be essentially a 2%, you know, reduction off of what we were planning for the, you know, for FY20 or for FY21, but we also have, you know, sort of, I think everyone here would acknowledge that, that the current budget that, you know, we have been looking at for FY21 may need revising further as the towns get more clarity as, as to what the impact of all of these COVID-19 closures are on their economies. So Kate, if you want to chime in on anything else?
Yes, we have to provide to CDSE, like Scott said, by June 1 or before, and it seems like they want us to provide that information even though there were town meeting scheduled. We don't will, it's not like we're really making up a budget for them. We have to provide them with because as Scott said, it's 1/12 of the FY20 budget. We have to just provide them information on what had we planned in the current year to use for E and D. And then they'll be telling us basically what our budget is going to be. There are some exceptions. There's some exceptions, like if, if in FY21, which is not the district, but if in FY21, let's say it was the first year that we would have to pay towards a bond, they would, they would look at different things individually, but you know, I, I've been putting together the information and I'd like to just send it to them as soon as possible, you know, this week, the beginning of next week to say, okay, this is what our budget was in 20. This is what the 21 budget is. These are the revenues we projected to use at 21. This is what we're operating on in 20. This is the E and D we're using in 20. This is what we were planning on using on 21 and, and the capital and the debt and then see what happens. But as Scott said, it's, it's, you know, 1/12 of the FY20 and the FY21 budget is up over $900,000. So the good news though is that hopefully, I don't know, you know, we don't have to pay teacher salaries until September, you know, all the, all the teachers, instructional staff, all the 10 month employees, they don't get paid until September. So it might give us a little time to get in alignment, you know, hopefully if they can't do town meeting in June, sometime thereafter or figure out some way to have a big, big screen and do it like this. That's all.
Question?
Ms. Scott?
It may have been in a document that you sent me, but I did not read it thoroughly. I skimmed and that doesn't usually end well for me. But with a 1/12 budget, is that where you take every line item and do it 1/12? Or you just take the overall budget and do 1/12 and we can allocate where it's needed and possibly reduce certain things that we, do you understand what I'm saying?
I do. And I, and I'll speak to that. Just, I've never had to do this, but I think it's, it's a, it's a dollar number. I don't think that the commissioner is going to say you're going to have to spend X number of dollars in the 1,000 and, you know, on that way. I, I believe, because what, what they're, we have to present them with the budget figures and I, I want to just, I have it on my, I have it right in front of me because I don't think it's, I don't think we have to give them I don't think we have to give them a line item budget. I think you have to give them your budget number.
Okay.
I'll know better.
I'm just thinking that logistically, if we have to do a 1/12 budget, there's going to be some things that we may not want to spend money on and we may have other priorities. And I just want to make sure we're not being handcuffed to have those line items be 1/12 and have to be spent. Or is that maybe even the school committee is going to have to move cost centers? I don't, I don't know. I mean, that's, that's all.
I think my, my recommendation might be that Katie and I can work with the, you know, with sort of the central office team and, and put together a 1/12 budget. We'll say it, call it a 1/12 budget proposal. And then I'd recommend that we connect with the finance subcommittee towards the end of next week or very beginning of the week of the 11th. And I, and I think we have plenty of, I think we have plenty of time to bring back to the group on the 14th, you know, to, to at our next school committee meeting, what the one, what we're proposing as our 1/12 budget and just kind of clarify. And I, you know, I, I want to also emphasize here, I'm a little, I'm a little worried that a 1/12 budget may be optimistic and rosy for what towns can sustain, given this. I, you know, it's, I, I think it's, it's it's one of these, it's yet another exercise where we're putting forth something and, and just because you're putting forth a 1/12 budget doesn't mean that either town can support a 1/12 budget, given what their revenue picture may be. And that's something we don't know yet.
And in, so in Mass General Law, the Department of Revenue can approve cities and towns to deficit spend. So if they don't have a budget in place, they can deficit spend, but the law does not allow regional schools to do that. So the law is in place to set this 1/12 budget. So it will be interesting to see how it all plays out.
All right. Great. Tina?
Yeah, I just wanted to throw in and I'll talk more about this in our finance subcommittee, but I've been attending as a legislative liaison all these mask meetings for the school committees. This is a hot topic of conversation with all of our school committees at the moment. So I've been trying to follow all the various dialogues and to Nancy's question, it's my understanding, but I'll certainly do my part as a school committee member that we're working with an amount and not necessarily this amount has to go here and here. I, I I got the impression that there was a little bit of flexibility there to move some things around, but I, I will be following this quite closely, just as the legislative liaison to see what everybody else is doing because everybody's got the same issue right now. A lot of people do.
Thank you, Tina, very much. I'm just scanning the room to see if anybody else has any questions for Dr. Carpenter or is there Sernio? Nope. All right. Great. That was thrilling news. Dr. Carpenter, thank you. Moving on now to the FY21 budget E and D assessment revote. Dr. Carpenter?
I'll defer to Katie on this one.
Katie Sernio, business manager. You can only say it so many more times, you know?
Oh, I forgot to identify myself earlier. You can know who I am. The, now, what we have to do if we can all for take a moment and forget about COVID-19, all right? Let's turn the way back clocks of pre-COVID-19. And we went and presented to the board of selectmen in Howard and was strongly encouraged to present back to them, come back to our committee and then return to them with this, an assessment that they, that came in under 2%. With the finance up committee met, we discussed it and we were able to achieve that goal if we used 133,000 additional E and, from our E and D to have the assessment come in at 1.99% to Howard increase over FY20 and it would be a decrease of 1.31% to Chatham. So the discussion was, and everybody please on the finance up committee chime in, that it would be nice to have this resolved so that when we're going forward, we're not bogged down in that we came in higher than what was already requested because I, we all know that FY21 is certainly not going to look like what we presented and voted on back in March. If I'm not mistaken. So originally, I don't know where I was, but remember we revoked it because of the 50 cents. Well, I originally sent, Leah sent you the revoke with the 133,000, but just tonight I sent everybody a revised one because I needed to modify it to include the 50 cents. So I don't know if you need more information, if anybody else wants to chime in. This was just to show that, you know, again, goodwill, that we're all on the same team. And then we move forward to then dissect and reflect and revise FY21, now taking into account COVID-19. I believe that's the message.
I think it's also important that this is a, it's a good faith effort and I fully acknowledge that there's a very, you know, a very high likelihood that in another few weeks, we are going to have to come back and come up with what is our FY21 budget after we get some financial clarity from the towns and, and potentially revoke something in time for the June 22 town meetings in both Chatham and Harwich.
Dead silence. Or Mr. Russell? Turn your mic on, buddy. You gotta talk about the budget.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Short and sweet. I echo both our former speakers regarding this issue. I think we spent as a subcommittee as well as the whole committee two weeks ago, well over a couple of hours discussing the pluses and minuses. So I would encourage us to move forward with that and then face the next step in three weeks or four weeks once we get a little more clarity with Chatham and Barnstable municipal side telling us what is the projected shortfall. So someone nicely sent us all a motion regarding this budget. If it's appropriate this time, Scott or Katie, one of us could offer that as a motion and a vote to move on.
Is there a motion?
I'll read the motion. Motion to approve the revised fiscal 21 assessment by using an additional 133,000 of excess and deficiency funds to support the school committee's approved fiscal 21 budget. The total amount of E and D funds to be used in fiscal 21 to support the budget will be will be $872,809. This is 550,000, same as fiscal 20 amount and as presented, plus 133,000 additional, plus 189,809 to support the purchase of the ELA curriculum as presented. Total of 872,809.
Second.
I'm gonna have to do, oh, questions or discussions? Sorry. I think we beat this like a dead horse. Anybody? Keep my mouth shut on this one, and I'm gonna do a roll call. Can you guys just make sure your mics are on? Sharon?
Sharon, can you turn your mic all on?
Sharon, turn your mic on. On.
Yeah.
Sharon asking for the roll call vote, unless you have a question or discussion that I did not see your hand raised for.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know. Yes. So here's a part of a discussion. I feel very comfortable in doing this, but I do not think this is great timing for us to do the ELA curriculum without knowing the whole thing about what monies we're gonna have to come up with. So I'm ready to do all the rest, but for that one reason, I, I don't know, would I have to vote against it because I don't support that since you rolled it all in together? It's not that I don't support it, I just don't support it till we know more about our budget.
Carrie?
I think the main motion, I mentioned inclusion of the curriculum to ELA, but the main motion is to transfer sums to achieve the 2% request. The ELA was voted by the school committee well over a month ago, if not six weeks ago. That sub, that figure was already voted by all of us.
Okay, so, so that was my question. Is, is this, the ELA is done with? This is just a, I don't know. I see Nancy's hand up, maybe.
Ms. Scott?
So I think what Katie said when she started to discuss this is the most pertinent part, is this is all pre-COVID-19. So we're pretending like COVID-19 has never happened with this budget.
But I can't do that.
Well, that's what this conversation started as, is that is it necessary for us to add additional E and D to support our budget, knowing full well that there is going to be some kind of change coming from the towns? And the towns are gonna probably ask us to do something to our budgets. So this is, this is kind of living in a la-la land world. And we can hope and we can, you know, pray that this is what is gonna look like when we vote our budget for the towns. It's highly unlikely. So again, this is all a pre-COVID-19 request from the town of Harwich to reduce our budget to be an assessment less than 2%. So you can vote as you wish. I just wanted to make sure that you look at it as two totally different things. Because Jackie actually had very similar concerns as to whether or not it's even worth doing it at this point because we know that it's, there's gonna be different requests coming from the towns.
But along with that, along with that statement, are we putting the ELA curriculum on hold to actually buy until we find out about the COVID? Or not?
We aren't spending anything until we know what the budget actually looks like for next year.
Okay. I.
We're not, we're not hiring several positions too, until we know what the budget looks like for next year. So it's, it's a. We need to see.
So to reiterate, this was pre-COVID-19. Readjustment of the budget includes the curriculum as we would go for without COVID. Voting on this and knowing that we will have to then probably amend our budget again because of all of the towns' needs and our own needs. And at that time, we will have to address what stays and what goes. Everybody clear? Not that I agree to vote right now, but I'm going. All right, so we had a motion, we had a second. And now if there's no more questions or discussion, I'm gonna do the roll call. Everybody good? Okay. Sharon?
I.
Ms. Scott?
I.
Ms. Osceello?
Yes.
Ms. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Hi.
Ms. Games?
Hi.
Myself as I. Motion carries. All right, moving on to the open meeting law violation process update. I'll just, unless anybody else wants to go, I'll just give an update that we had prepared the statement with our attorney, submitted that before the 14th day as required, with a copy to the complainant as well as to the Attorney General. That has all been sealed and sent, and at this time, we just wait for a response. And subcommittee reports. These are first readings. Is there someone from the policy subcommittee that wants to go over the policies?
I will, I'll take on one of them. The, the policy regarding the dress code. That's essentially changed to that parents and students will be determining what a child will use as long as it's destructive. I'm paraphrasing. Would somebody like to do another one?
So that's the file KIB volunteer program. Does everyone have that in front of them? Are there any questions?
Not the volunteer program.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. That's file JICA student dress code.
Yes, thank you.
Are there any questions for Ms. Stout? Okay, moving on to the, how about file KC, community involvement? Joe or Sharon or who else is on the policy sub?
I am.
Ms. Henderson, do you want to go over that one briefly?
Sure, there was just some language changes to make it more clear for the community involvement. So we adjusted, we adjusted the language so that it was, it was more readable.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for the policy subcommittee on that one? Concerns, discussions? Okay, and the third one would be the file KIB volunteer program.
I can start it off and then others please jump in to add or clarify as, as needed. This is about observation and parent, parent observation and counselor or other observation of students in class, particularly students.
Joe, hold on one. Ms. Henderson, is there, are we on the wrong?
Yeah, Joe, I think, oh, I'm sorry. I think Joe is reading from the one that we're going to vote on. I think we're just right now looking at the first read ones.
I jumped ahead then. Okay, sorry.
That's okay. So we just, we did JICA, we did, Mary, you did KIB?
I did, no, I did.
KC. Okay, so now the KIB volunteer program was the one we were talking about.
Right, and I'll jump in there so Joe can take the other one. So this one, KIB volunteer program, it's basically like some of the others. It's just a little bit cleaner. You'll see, if you're looking at your paper, three red lines. It's just a little bit of cleaning up and strengthening the language to make it clear, you know, real simple grammatical stuff.
Any questions for the group? Okay, great. Thank you. Next on the agenda would be the superintendent's report. Dr. Carpenter?
Lucky for you, I've limited to five pages, so. But what, we.
Not feeling so lucky.
We have till midnight, right? So just, just first, Tuesday, April 21st, Governor Baker announced that schools would remain closed through the rest of the year. Also in terms of news highlights since our last meeting, we, you know, the governor has also signed legislation to address certain aspects of schools related to COVID-19. So the MCAS have been canceled for the year. Obviously, if we're not gonna be around for the remainder of the year, we can't have MCAS. We do have, you know, school districts have kids that are needing to graduate that need to pass MCAS tests. And if, for whatever reason, a child doesn't have an opportunity to pass an MCAS test, they've made a modification this year for the class of 2020 that if the child has passed a, a course in ELA, if that's what they needed, that, that, you know, or if it was math, that that can count as a competency determination for the student. One of the things just prior to all of these COVID-19 closures, we talked about that Mark and I would be submitting a Student Opportunity Act plan that we would be presenting to the school committee. Well, those plans obviously got derailed in part because one of the things that the plan requires is that we're supposed to have a parent group brought together to discuss the plan. So, you know, so the commissioner is still waiting to put out a date for when those plans are due. And we may have to go and poll people together virtually if that is one of the required things in the ultimate plan. We also, last, last Friday, the commissioner released a missive on length of school years. And he has recognized that, that, that school districts likely need to go to their 185th calendar day this year. He had put out something prior that you don't have to go beyond your 185th calendar day, but, but was expecting school districts would go to their 185th calendar day. But has also made a provision that school districts can appeal going to the 185th calendar day. And I would advocate that our district needs to make, needs to and should make an appeal to go to our 183rd day, which would be June 22nd. I apologize, at our last school committee meeting, I mistakenly said June 23rd would be our last day. So our teachers would be working their full contracted year. But we had two days during that, that week, that initial week of closure where our teachers were doing professional development to prepare for distance learning. And our students and their families were picking up computers, locker belongings, and, and school supplies to prepare for distance learning. So I do think that we're well, we're well poised to go submit an appeal and have it approved. I mean, we closed school on March 14th and we're out total three days due to, you know, with, fully closed for three days, then came back for two days of PD with all of the students getting their supplies and then launched into a online distance learning that I think really was an exemplar in the state on Monday, March 23rd. So, and we're able to do that before, weeks before many school districts even started distance learning. So I do think that we're well poised for a, getting a, an appeal approved by the commissioner with regard to the length of the school year. But I'll have a little letter written up for our next meeting to present to you because it does require the school committee to approve the request to go to the commissioner per his missive. The other thing that happened last Friday is the commissioner put out content standards for elementary and secondary schools when it comes to distance learning, which is an interesting little twist because we, as we started these COVID-19 closures, the commissioner was not saying anything, but, you know, we should just be doing enrichment, not moving the curriculum forward. Now that school has closed for the remainder of the school year, the commissioners put out a, and I, it's, it's a document that, that's on, that's been shared online. And I, I know the MASC has shared it with, with school committee members too. But it really takes the content standards in ELA and math across all grade levels and says, here are the clear things that we need to make sure get imparted upon a first grader, a second grader, a third grader, and so on. So one of the things that I'll have Mark Smith do is work up with me a, a spreadsheet that we can then work with our principals and our teacher leaders to just make sure that, you know, that each classroom at each grade level has met the standard or these prerequisite learning standards that the commissioner has identified. And I do believe that many of our classrooms have already met the standards that they have. But if they haven't, we want to make sure that we're doing something during distance learning to make sure that those prerequisites standards are met. And the commissioner emphasizes that these are not now a new sort of reduced version of what we expect kids to know for MCAS down the road. But at least during this period of time, just critical things that we should have students know. In terms of food services, I just want to, first of all, thank the central office staff and our principals and building level administrative team. During last week's April vacation, they were working through the April vacation, making lunches and breakfasts and putting them together for our families so that we, we still had food service happen during the April vacation because, you know, others were stepping in and it gave a chance for our food service staff to go and, and have a little vacation time too. They have been just doing a fantastic job. In terms of the number of families that are, you know, that we are serving currently, we have, on average, over the last four days, we have been serving 445 breakfasts and 445 lunches at the schools. The, the high school is, the high school grab and go is somewhere between, between about 180 families coming to get, get food to upwards of 240. At Chatham Middle School, at the middle school in Chatham, we have somewhere between 110 and almost 140 families coming for meals there. We also started this, this week, Sharp on Wheels, that if families can't get to our grab and go at the high school or middle school, we'll get food to you. And we have 52 families have signed up for that. So we have 728 meals heading out, you know, so on Mondays, the families are getting breakfast and lunch for Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. And on Thursdays, they have breakfast and lunch for, you know, each child for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So 728 meals are heading out a week through the Sharp's on Wheels. We have 6,230 meals are heading out a week on average right now during our grab and go for almost 7,000 meals a week that we're serving during this time for our families. Which brings us to the Governor Baker, who has proclaimed tomorrow as a school hero, or school lunch hero day through a governor's proclamation or our snazzy Montemoi little graphic of that. So, you know, we have some great food service staff that have been working through this and supporting families in need, so thank you to them and the kudos are much deserved. Let's see, second to last, one of my superintendent goals was to, was to have conversations with superintendent. I, I'm happy to say that last night we had one of my, actually, it was the most parents come to any conversation with superintendent. And I was able to do it right here at home with, and we were joined by well over 40 people. I, I think if we looked at how many people kind of came in and went during it. And so nothing like COVID-19 to bring it together. This is one of those things I chalk up as the silver linings of COVID-19. More people showing up for, for the superintendent's conversations. Big topics were graduation, which I'll come to in a second. Then there were many that were just asking about distance learning. And it was really two sides of the coin on distance learning. There were some that wanted to know, what should we do if our child needs more? And one of the things I suggested is, you know, feel free to reach out to the teacher and say, hey, you know, my child's ready for more, could use some more. And I think a lot of our teachers are great at differentiating and can provide that support. And then there are some parents that were, you know, letting us know that they needed or their family needed more support or something different in, in terms of the distance learning. So, but it was a, it was a good conversation. And I, I know Ms. Gaines was, was on there last night. And as were Mary and Robin, and I believe Bill were on as well last night. So good conversation overall. In terms of graduation, which, which was the dominant, I think, conversation concern that, that families had raised. I, you know, and I shared, I shared with them what, you know, what I think is sort of the, the hard truth that we're all wrestling with. And, and I think for me, graduation this, this year, it, you know, strikes near and dear as the parent of a senior. And I think, I think the, perhaps the only advantage that my senior has is that he unfortunately is stuck with his father talking about the doom and gloom of COVID-19 on every, it's like every dinner time and, and where dad thinks this is going. And, you know, so, you know, so I, I think he's processed what the summer might look like for graduation and what the summer might look like on Cape Cod. And, and I think he's, you know, I think he's, he's had maybe a little bit more time to process. But we, you know, so, you know, so I, I was talking with Bill Galvin of the Cape Cod Times, who was asking me about graduation. I had, you know, told him that, you know, I, I kind of look at, if, if there was a miracle that could happen and we could have graduation under the tent and COVID-19 wasn't with us by June 7th, you know, we'd be under that tent and that's, that's our, you know, that's our plan A, is this traditional graduation under the tent. But I, I think we have all probably crept enough out of denial that we're not going to be under the tent this year. And, and behind me in my, in my Zoom background is, you know, is the graduation photo from last year. And one of the sad things is that, you know, I won't have one of these, I'm quite sure, for my son and his graduating class. That, you know, that, you know, this behind me would violate any sort of social distancing. And it would violate, at the moment, the governor's orders on gathering. You know, that, then in Massachusetts, we're not supposed to have a gathering of more than 10 people. And, you know, clearly, we have 120-some seniors. So, you know, so there's, there's those challenges. And the reality is, I don't see us in a state relaxing that. Now, granted, some states have relaxed things like that. But I, you know, but I don't see Massachusetts, given where Massachusetts is and dealing with this pandemic, getting to, you know, getting to that place. And I don't think, you know, personally, you know, from a personal perspective, that, you know, that relaxing the social distancing standards that are currently in place during the summer is going to be good for the public health. And, and we're in, you know, we're in an area of Massachusetts where I think there is a very vulnerable senior population. And I think we need to do everything we can, you know, to protect that everyone's, you know, not just, you know, it's, it's not just the, the graduates, but protect everybody in the community. So we have talked about Plan Bs, and I think I've mentioned to you before, and I know Sharon has emailed me. You know, it's like, why can't we do even something like a, you know, you know, you do graduation at the Wellfleet Drive-In or something like that? And, you know, if you saw the headlines today, Wellfleet as a town has, has, has the selectmen have, have banned gatherings at Wellfleet on town land. Now, granted, the drive-in's not town land, but have banned gatherings for the rest of the calendar year. And, you know, so I think, I think we're kind of seeing where this is, you know, where this is heading. You know, if, you know, if the, you know, Fourth of July parade's off, if Oyster Fest is off, you know, that, you know, that there's, you know, I think this, this ability to bring people together for the graduation that I know my son has been looking forward to since he was knee-high because I, I think my son probably has been at graduation since he was four and, and has this vision of what, I think he's been dreaming about what his graduation would look like for a long time. So, you know, so again, given the governor's, you know, gathering restrictions, bringing together 120-some graduates, even on the front lawn of, of our high school, would violate that social, or violate the gathering piece and, and create some challenges. Not to mention if we had our graduates and their parents. And, and, you know, while I've had a vision of, you know, we could have each graduate come up in a car and we have enough front lawn to space out the cars even further apart than you could space them out at the Wellfleet Drive-In, it still is violating that gathering missive. And, and, and really, I think if I look at it in terms of, after 20 years of watching high school graduations and being part of high school graduations, having, you know, being in a car with your parents is not what you want for a high school graduation. I, I think you want to be able to go hug your friends and you want to be able to, you know, it's, it's, I was, I was sharing with parents last night just a couple of the, a couple of the pictures that Kat Schmidt sent me of graduations in years gone by. I mean, it, it's like, the kids want to be near each other, you know? And, you know, it's like, they, they've gotten their diplomas and, and it's, it's this, it's this gathering and this culmination. And that's something I sadly, as superintendent, can't give my son this year. You know, so we have been also discussing a Plan C that would have a, would have families celebrating and us doing a hybrid of a, of an online, of a, of a virtual front end with all of the speeches, but also with a live presentation to each individual class member of the diploma using the, the wonder of technology. And I have Jim Birchfield and Steve Cass working with this. And we, you know, we're going to do a little test run on, next week on how it could work. But I think if you think about a, I think if, in your head, if you watched any of the NFL draft last week, where they kept going live into, you know, into houses all across the country, it would be, it would be similar to that, where we would leverage technology to have those celebrations of, oh, you're the first round draft pick, second picks, third pick. You know, where you, you end up going into each house, but having that on the end of a, of a pre-recorded thing. But again, that's not what our graduates have dreamed of. And, you know, so, so I'll, I'll read off one little thing that was texted to me just before this move, this, this meeting. So, so my son is, is also the class president. And, and I've made it clear that, you know, that, you know, that the date of graduation, I leave to Bill, working with the steering committee of students and teachers. That's not something that the superintendent needs to go determine. And so my son, my son texts me, he says, I had a meeting with Mr. Burkett, Ms. Police, Ms. Gilmet, Mr. Alamo, Ms. Kelly, Ms. Creedman, Dr. Otto, and my other officers. We talked about the possible grad, plans for graduation. I've noticed that my fellow officers are just very sad and disappointed at how things may play out. And I, and I get that. And then my son, who, who may have to head off to his next, his future things in mid, in mid-June, he says, I want to let you know, I'm totally fine if graduation date gets pushed back to have a more traditional ceremony, even if it means I miss graduation. I, I know everyone would like a more traditional ceremony. You've taught me that being a leader isn't always great. Sometimes you have to make tough decisions. I know, even if we push it back, we still might not be able to have the traditional graduation. So, yeah, but again, you know, he's somebody who's been wrestling in his head with, you know, what the reality of COVID-19 is, is kind of doing. And, and my want is to have them all be rejoicing together. And I think the challenge we're going to have is, I'm not sure that anytime this summer, we're going to be at a place where we're back to hugging and, and all of that. So that would be the variety of things that, that I have to share under the superintendent's report. I do think that by our next school committee meeting, Bill and his, his crew with the senior class advisors will be, will be coming to some decision on dates and, and the graduation approach. I've asked Bill to, to start processing with all of the seniors what graduation may be. Because I do think that there's a lot of processing that needs to go, go on. I think there's a lot of loss that this, that this senior cohort is having right now with regard to what they had hoped for versus the way senior year is playing out. And I also know that we're going to do as much as we can with a senior week and to try to do some really special things for seniors as best as we can, given also the needs to socially distance. That's it for the superintendent report.
Great, thank you very much, Dr. Carpenter. Lots of information, any, anything we need to go over? Nope, we're good. Okay. And that, let's see, we did the FY21 budget vote, we did a second reading.
Hey, Jackie, I apologize.
Oh, there you are. Sorry.
Yeah, sorry about that. That was my fault because I was, I had my mic on. Just three things here quickly. First of all, for the superintendent's report, I just wanted to acknowledge the grab and go. I sit on a couple of state commissions and the grab, not us specifically, but just in general, there was a conversation about a lot of kids across the state that aren't getting the food. And so I was very happy to be able to share as, as a Montemoy school committee member that we actually are out doing the grab and go. And I just wanted to let you know how much that was appreciated, even though we're just one school district. But it, it's amazing at things that aren't really happening across the Commonwealth right now that we are doing. And I just wanted to recognize, because I, I shared that on a call, I guess it was last week. And so just wanted to acknowledge that. Secondly, in the thing, the chat, the superintendent's chat yesterday, I wanted to acknowledge Nancy and Meredith because both of them were there. I just happened to speak at the very end. And as a senior parent, you know, this is really, really hard. And I just echo all the emotion that Scott was sharing in his report because you can kind of feel the emotion behind it. It's, it's very emotional. And I just wanted to share here what I shared last night. And I, I will certainly reach out just, just to feel, just to get it off my chest, I guess. I, it's so emotional for these seniors that I just, I hope there's something happening that includes all the seniors. And, and I can appreciate the leadership and, and the leaders of the class rightfully earn their spot at the table. But it does concern me a little bit. I just want to make sure all voices are getting heard. And it's not something that's selected without some input in some way. Because I, I just feel like some of our seniors feel very, very strongly about what's happening. And, and it's very, very emotional. So as long as we're addressing those emotional needs, I guess, I just, I just hope a conversation is happening with the class as a whole. So that's, that's just my comment there. And I think that's it. Thank you, Dr. Carpenter.
Any other questions or hands that I did not see? Okay, cool. Oh, Ms. Scott.
I hesitate to do this, but I just wanted to say thank you for, for the conversation last night. I think there were a couple of parents who were very frustrated with the distance learning. And I think they felt heard and they felt that their questions were answered. So I think that it was, you know, there was somebody who was just very frustrated and just didn't know what to do with her, with themselves, with their younger children with the distance learning. And I just, I think it was just, it was a great thing to do and the way it was handled and, and the way it was held so that everybody could either ask a question or not, or put it in the chat. So I just want to thank you for doing that last night.
Great, thank you. And Dr. Carpenter, were you just waving? That Nancy was waving? Yep, that was it. Okay. I think everybody's on different parts of everyone's screen. So she was up, you had her down. Okay, great. And presentation of the warrants. And we did that, and we did that. All right, great. At this time.
I think we have, Jackie, I think we have another vote, the second reading.
Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we already did that. You're right.
That was Joe, Joe's big moment.
That's why I looked at the number and was like, oh, okay. Excuse me. Ms. Scott.
May I please make a motion to approve file IHBA A policy guidelines for classroom slash program observations?
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, discussions? All right. Roll call. Ms. Scott.
Hi.
Ms. Rossiello.
Yes.
Ms. Shan.
Yes.
Mr. Russell, turn your mic on.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Stout. Your mic's off.
Hi.
Great. Ms. Henderson.
Hi.
Ms. Gaines.
Hi.
And myself is I. Great, thank you. Motion carries. And now we are up to public comment, the final public comment of the night. Is there anyone that would like to speak at this time? Nope. Okay. Motion to adjourn. Oh, roll call. Again, Ms. Scott.
Hi.
Ms. Rossiello.
Yes.
Ms. Shan.
Yes.
Mr. Russell.
Hi.
Ms. Stout.
Hi.
Ms. Henderson.
Hi.
Ms. Gates.
Hi.
And I. Meeting adjourned, 8:51.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, all.
Until next time.
You safe?
Mike.
Yep, good night.
Bye.
Bye.
How do I get out of here?